Good evening, welcome to the October 7, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting for the City of Murfreesboro. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a forum present this evening. So our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the September 2, 2020 and September 16, 2020 Planning Commission Meetings. Were there any additions or corrections to any of those minutes?
If none, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have five public hearings this evening. The first one will be a zoning application to amend the planned signage overlay district zoning for St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital for approximately 70.7 acres along North Thompson Lane, Medical Center Parkway, and Gateway Boulevard. Ascension St. Thomas is the applicant. Ms. Stevens, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Teresa Stevens, the City's sign administrator. The zoning ordinance allows planned sign overlay districts in keeping with the promotion and protection of the public health, safety, comfort, and convenience standards set forth by the city and to permit the use of new and innovative signs on large atypical developments. The city encourages the design and development of signs that are of higher quality than would be under the signed ordinance and to promote aesthetic and architectural improvements in the total planning of large land tracts. Also to promote signs which are compatible with the surroundings and to provide an option to the existing sign ordinance. To be eligible for a planned sign overlay district, the development must consist of 20 acres or more in size and be zoned appropriately. The subject property is located at 1700 Medical Center Parkway and is approximately 70.71 acres along North Thompson Lane, Medical Center Parkway, and Gateway Boulevard. The property is zoned light industrial as in within the GDO III overlay. In 2008, the hospital received approval for the planned sign overlay district. Anytime there is a request for change in existing PSO, an amendment to the PSO is required. Amending the PSO must be approved by Planning Commission as well as City Council. In addition, this property is located within the GDO III overlay and must receive approval from the Design Review Committee, meeting the Design Development Guidelines adopted by Murfreesboro Gateway Property Owners Association. The proposed sign changes to the PSO were approved by the DRC on August 4 at the regularly scheduled meeting. The hospital is requesting the amendment for rebranding of the hospital from St. Thomas Rutherford to Ascension St. Thomas and to increase visibility of building identification signs. A few changes include building identification signs for the three buildings on the property, rebranding of the St. Thomas Cross to the Ascension Trinity with the A in the center, the addition of a freestanding sign in the front garden at the hospital entrance, and rebranding of the freestanding wall signs throughout the property. Applicant and Ascension St. Thomas representative Denise Simmons with AGI is here with a small presentation is available to answer questions as well. A public hearing is set to be held after the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm not used to a microphone. I use when my voice carries, so we'll see how we go here. My name is Denise Simmons and I am the Senior Project Manager for AGI Sign and we are here representing the hospital and the sign conversion. The master sign plan, we will be looking at updating all of the channel letter sets, leaving them as bronze to mimic the colors they are now, however, increasing the size on the Seton Building and the DePaul Building, as well as the front radius sign for Ascension St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital. We will be updating the plate letter sets on all of the entrance monuments. We will be going back and taking off the repaired tile, stone tile that's there now. We will be going back with new tile and then we will also be going to the, let's see. If you notice in this picture, I'm sorry, St. Thomas on the left picture, the current existing signage, we have, you can see many holes that have been patched. These are all going to be replaced, removed with new stone that matches this tile. And then we will be going back with the Ascension St. Thomas Rutherford logo. And we'll be handling this, we call it a milk run, but it's just going around the site so that each of the entrances will always have a brand and then we will make a loop around. We will be changing the cross to the Ascension Trinity and refacing the existing signs on the property. Those signs are, the sign structure will not change. We will just be refacing all of the wayfinding signs. You will not see the structure while that's all been approved. We're only changing the faces, pulling out the slats, putting new slats in, and changing the logo to the Ascension brand. That pretty much is the detail and overview of what we're going to be doing at the hospital. The Trinity, I do have a page here for the Trinity showing the different types we will be going back with. The Memorial Garden at the hospital actually does not have a Trinity at this time and we were calling it an architectural structure, but because it has the A in the middle and the Trinity represents their mission and then Ascension A, they would like to have that for the Memorial Garden there.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Simmons before we open the public hearing? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will open the public hearing and we will ask anybody that has an interest in speaking in this or any of our public hearings tonight to come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and then make your comments either for or against the application directly to the Planning Commission, not to the developers or the audience. So with that, we open this first public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding the amended sign plan for the hospital. And seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Ask the Planning Commission if they have any other comments or questions.
Ms. Jones, I'll be abstaining.
We will have one abstention tonight on this particular item. Any other questions or comments? And if not, we're ready for a motion.
I'll move for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention, Ms. Garland. Item B is a zoning application for approximately 1.23 acres located along the east side of Gresham Lane to be rezoned from RS 15 to CH. Toni Emanuel is the applicant. Ms. Kerr, good evening.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Members of the Planning Commission, this zoning application is for a property that's located along the east side of Gresham Lane, north of Claremont Drive. Subject parcel is currently undeveloped and is currently zoned single-family residential 15. The parcel totals 2.02 acres. The applicant has requested the eastern 1.23 acres to be rezoned to commercial highway and the balance of the parcel, the .79 acres, will remain as RS 15. The mulch company located at 511 Agri Park Drive is proposing to expand its existing business for additional mulch storage area. The properties to the north and to the south of the property are within the city and is zoned RS 15 with single-family dwellings. Further to the north is the vintage at Blackman Apartment Complex and the 555 Gresham Lane Town Home Development, both of which zoned multifamily residential 16. The property across Gresham Lane to the west is zoned residential medium density in the unincorporated county and is developed with single-family dwellings. The adjacent properties to the east of the property are zoned CH and are primarily undeveloped and the mulch company business is located directly to the east of this property. The future land use map recommends that neighborhood commercial is the most appropriate land use character for the subject property. The characteristics of neighborhood commercial includes low-intensity commercial land uses about the same scale and intensity as residential development within the suburban residential area and clustered at intersections of community collector thoroughfares. Examples of uses in this land use character are professional offices, convenience stores, dry cleaners, post office, coffee shops, and drugstores. Compatible existing zoning districts are CL, CF, CMR, CM, and CMRS 8. While the CH zoning proposed would allow for these uses, it would also allow for increased intensity of development and a larger variety of uses that are not consistent with the neighborhood commercial land use character. However, because only a portion of this subject property is being considered in this request, the front portion will remain as is as RS 15. The Planning Commission will need to discuss whether this would be viewed as a logical extension of a more intense general commercial designation to the east. The applicant is here, Mr. Clyde Browntree, to represent the applicant, to answer any questions you may have, as well as myself, about the proposed rezoning. And the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing, then formulate a recommendation to City Council.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Any questions for Ms. Kerr? Okay. And did Mr. Browntree want to make a presentation? Are there your clock? Sorry. Let's see you back there.
Chairman Jones, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree, Lutherson Steel Engineering. I am representing Mr. Emanuel. And I just wanted to make a great job kind of presenting the project, but what we're really after, what he's after is an expansion of storage for his mulch capacity. He's kind of outgrown that site, so he's not promoting any more buildings back there. It's primarily just additional storage. On his property, most people don't know, but he's got a botanical garden on the side and his buffer, he really encourages more of an arboretum type of kind of application. So he's excited about having more room to plant more unique trees along that buffer line. So I just wanted to make sure you understood programmatically what he wants to accomplish and that's primarily expanding his storage capacity for the existing operation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Browntree. We'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to come forward to speak on this application. And seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and ask for comments and questions from the Planning Commission.
I had one for Ms. Kerr. I assume we sent notice for the change to the surrounding neighbor adjacent to the north. I was trying to pull that up and it's a little slow, but obviously they're not here. Any concern about not having a, it looks like that lot where the line is proposed, the lot line does not have a tree line that borders it. It looks like some of it's open, just from what I can tell. Maps may be old, but any concern about that staff has?
I believe any development that would take place on there would require a site plan that we would require there to be a buffer.
Thank you.
But Ms. Yeah.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Hello, Mr. McKnight. Welcome.
Mr. Martin, he has decided to put a buffer. He would put a buffer there once he started to move in and start utilizing that land. He has agreed to do that.
Because, yeah, I guess it's not really development. It's, I mean, he is just going to be using it for storage, so that won't really require a site plan, right? So.
Yes.
To.
It would require a site plan?
It will?
And yes, I met with Bill and the applicant out on the site just to make sure of where we would put the buffer and he has submitted a conceptual design that he would submit to make sure we get that placed in the correct place that we determine while we're on site.
And a buffer that I guess would be the required buffer between commercial highway and the residential.
Yes, where he actually did the subdividing of the lot.
Good. Thank you, Mr. McKnight. Any other questions?
They answered my question, which was, what about a buffer? Because we are going commercial to residential.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item C is a zoning application for approximately 12.56 acres located along Christie Nobway to be rezoned from CH to PRD, Tiger Hill Town Homes PRD. And Celebration Homes is the applicant. Ms. Rush.
Good evening, Commissioner. The applicant is Celebration Homes represented by Randall Smith. The request is to rezone 12.56 acres from commercial highway to planned residential district. This would be to allow the development of 68 townhomes. This would be at a density of 5.6 dwelling units to the acre. As shown on the map, it's located along Christie Nobway, east of Shelbyville Pike, east of the terminus of Tiger Hill. It's not very evident on the aerial photo, but the site conditions are, it's a very steep topography with the hill cresting at approximately the middle of the property. It is shown as vacant. There is no development on the site at this time. The applicants indicated that due to the site topography, making it very difficult to develop commercial development, whereas residential building paths can be stair-stepped in to fit the slope of the land. That is the reason for the request for residential development here. Adjacent land uses to the northwest is planned commercial development where it's the Walmart superstore. To the northeast is planned residential district and RM 16, which has the Villas of Baskinwood Town Homes, as well as Cheney Way Apartments. To the south and east are lands in unincorporated Rutherford County that are both vacant, as you can see, to the south and southeast, and then single-family residences to the east along Anell Drive. And then to the west is commercial development. The lots that you see are vacant. There's been a recent approval of a site plan for a racetrack, gas station, and convenience store. Also, the two, there's two parcels that would be created as part of this development that would remain a CH zoning that would ultimately develop with commercial types of uses. The Tiger Hill Planned Residential District is proposing a horizontal property regime where the HOA would maintain the common areas and building exteriors. These would be two and three-bedroom units with a minimum of 1,700 square feet each. There would be both two-car and one-car garages mixed. The two-car garages would be primarily on the end units. These would be private roads serving the interior of the property and there are sidewalks proposed on both sides of the streets, as well as trees in the front yards. The applicant has submitted a program book which depicts what the buildings would look like on pages 14 through 18. As you can see, there are two different color options. One is kind of a gray color and the other one is more tan. And I would like to ask the Commission to discuss the colors if these are appropriate for this particular location. I would think they are proposing to do a mixture of them on different buildings, but that it would be something that could be discussed here tonight. In addition, the amenities that are proposed is a playground, a dog park, walking trails, and benches, a pavilion, and then a play lawn primarily in the middle. Access to the site is via Tiger Hill Road from Shelbyville Pike and there will be a secondary access that will be located behind the future commercial buildings. The applicant is requesting to deviate from the front yard setback from 35 feet to 25 feet because this particular use is compared to the RSA Type 2 for townhomes. Staff believes that 25 feet is an adequate distance for the driveway parking. The future land use map does show that this is identified as a general commercial, future land use development site and the proposed use for residential is not consistent with the future land use map. It would be consistent with auto-urban residential land use. The Planning Commission should discuss to determine if this is an appropriate instance to deviate from the future land use map. And if the rezoning is adopted, staff recommends that the map be revised to reflect the auto- urban residential for this site. Staff is supportive of this rezoning request because of the property topography being steep. Residential development can accommodate that type of topography much easier than the commercial type of development. It is adjacent to multifamily and single-family and this would create a transition and a buffer between the single-family residential and commercial to the west. Staff is asking that the Planning Commission discuss the proposed rezoning and that the Commission would conduct a public hearing on this matter and make a recommendation to the City Council. The applicant's representative, Mr. Matt Taylor, is here tonight to make a presentation briefly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Chair Lady Jones. Thank you, Ms. Marina Rush. Chair Lady Jones, members of the Planning Commission, Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. John Harney of the Parks Group, who also represents the applicants. We're both here to give you a brief presentation over the Tiger Hill Town Homes PRD rezoning request. As Ms. Rush explained, it's about a 12 and a half acre site along the east side of 231, just south of the Walmart that's constructed at the intersection of 231 and Joe B. Jackson. The site is extremely steep. There's been a little clearing over the years, but the terrain itself remains fairly It is zoned commercial highway today, as Ms. Rush indicated. To the east and south are unincorporated areas of Rutherford County. To the north is a mixture of commercial and multifamily and then to the west is commercial highway. This is looking basically from the center of the property, looking back toward 231, so looking toward the west. You can actually see the recently constructed MMC clinic to the left side of the page here. You can see there's a very significant drop. It's one of the highest points in the county, I believe, outside of the physical Tiger Hill and maybe the landfill. This is down on Christie Nobway, basically at the intersection with Tiger Hill, looking back onto the property, just to give you another sense of that steepness and that terrain. And then this is basically the same point, looking back the other way, you can see the signal that was constructed at the intersection of Tiger Hill and 231 that was put in with the Walmart project several years ago. The plan itself, as Ms. Rush said, we've requested the PRD zoning to allow for 68 townhomes. It gives us a density of about 5.4 homes per acre. We do that while retaining about 40% or a little bit over 40% of the site is open space. We've distributed that open space throughout the site, so it's not crammed all one side, though we each individual homeowner gets a taste of that. We've also distributed visitor parking throughout, as well as we've supplied for a trash compactor in the northeast corner, tried to get that out of sight and away from any individual unit there. Each of these will be sold through a horizontal property regime or an HPR. Everything outside the unit will be common space that'll be managed by an HOA. That HOA will be managed by a third-party management company, not the individuals. We have tried to create a very walkable community with sidewalks along all of our streets. In addition, we've created walking trails in some of the larger open spaces and supplemented those with some seating areas, benches. We've also planned for buffers along every side here. There's different degrees of buffer depending on what the adjacent land use is, but along all four sides. And then, as Ms. Rush said, these will be private streets throughout. None of these will be public. Townhomes, we think that they are very architecturally sound and attractive. We've tried to create a lot of interest. We started with good quality materials. The only vinyl here will be in the trim and soffit areas. All of these will be two stories. There'll be a minimum of 1,700 square feet and start at, or also have a one and two-car garages. So as Ms. Rush said, I think all the two cars will be on the end units, internal units will have one car. The colors, I believe me and Ms. Rush had discussed, maybe letting that come about at the site plan, we'll nail down which buildings are which and the exact colors then. We're happy to discuss that tonight if you prefer, though. And so, you know, you can see a lot of variation in that front roof line, a lot of detail in the garage doors, the windows, the front facade works in and out, so very attractive buildings. That's just another example. Here, instead of the roofs over the garages, they've went with decorative lights, that we don't have the monotony of the same building throughout. This is the rear. You can really see how we've stair-stepped these units, as Ms. Rush mentioned, to work with the grade. We anticipate most of the buildings in this development will have a stair-step foundation, not all of them. We'll try to have a few with a single floor, but we do anticipate most to be working with the terrain. And then the sides, again, there's not really a dull elevation on these buildings, a lot of windows, roofline variation. The amenities, we've planned a sign down at Christie Nobway. It's kind of welcome people home, if you will. Be landscaped, masonry to match the materials that we use internal to the development. And then, pretty quickly, after you enter the And then, pretty quickly, after you enter the development on the right-hand side, we're going to have a little activity area here. This will be a mixture of pavilion and playground, as well as our kiosk, so people will frequent this location on a daily or by-daily basis to get their mail, hang out with their neighbors. So this will be a spot that you make, you make some friends inside the neighborhood, we believe. And then, I mentioned the walking trails earlier. We've tried to get those away from the units themselves. We will supplement that with either leaving some natural trees that are on the side, or planting new trees along those, as well as some seating areas in the shaded areas. And then, of course, the mandatory dog park with any project today. We have tried to locate that away from the individual units, so the obnoxious portions of those do not bug anybody that is on the opposite side of any particular unit, but it is easily accessible with the sidewalks in the neighborhood. We do have one primary point of access down at the intersection of Christie Nobway. We have planned for a secondary point, so that whenever the property to the south develops, we can connect onto that. This one point of connection, it should be noted that this does give us good access back to a signal at 231. It also gives us tremendous access back to Walmart to the north, and the potential and the future commercial users on these out parcels. So we think it would be a nice little area here that'll get used by our residents. As I mentioned earlier, we've got different degrees of buffering. So on the north and the west, we've got a Type A buffer, which is a lower degree. On the west, when those out parcels develop, they will construct additional buffer with their site plans. And then to the north, you've already got Walmart constructed there. They either left natural buffer or supplemented to bring that up, so we're already protected there. And then on the east and south, I guess we are the more demanding use there, so we are proposing a Type D buffer, which is the second-degree buffer, second-highest degree buffer that the city has. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What is this one building that we're seeing? Like, I'm looking at page twelve, just to the north of the detention pond on the west side of the property, that, you know, looks like it's, is that private property between Walmart parking lot and this detention pond?
Yes, ma'am. That is actually, I call it the Delk property. The Delk property was bisected several years ago when Walmart cut their street through. He sold, I think, as a fifty- or sixty-foot sliver, if you will. Mr. Delk is in the process of selling the front portion of his property for the racetrack site plan that Ms. Rush mentioned earlier. And then that would be his, I don't, he may live there, own up closer to the street, but he also has his shop there. I think they work on maybe motorcycles.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
It looks like, based on looking at the GIS map, that there are parcels with, this Christie Nobway, if you're facing Walmart, there are parcels on the left. This site plan proposes having out parcels on the right as well, just outside the development.
Yes.
Is there a plan, I don't see it here, but is there a plan to have a sidewalk on the outside of those out parcels? I know it's probably normal for that to be put in once development on the out parcels are there.
Yes, sir. So they, those site plans would construct the sidewalk along Christie Nobway. I anticipate that our project, whenever we build the entrance road, would build the sidewalk all the way down to Christie Nobway. And so, I think that we show sidewalks on both sides of that entry street, and so we would build those with this project. Those commercial out parcels would build them along their side of Christie Nobway as they develop.
But those are not part of this parcel. They're, they would be owned by a separate owner.
That's right. And so, Mr. Mitchell owns this and is selling to Celebration, and so he would retain ownership of those two out parcels.
It would just be nice, from looking at the map, we've got sidewalks on both sides of Christie Nob coming up from Walmart, to be able to connect that development on the commercial pieces. But, I mean, obviously, if the developer doesn't own, I mean, if your project, your client doesn't own those parcels, that's going to be hard to do, so.
We can certainly look at that. I did not think they were constructing in front of Mr. Delk's house, but I'm not...
They're not. That's the only, but they go up to that.
Okay.
From the Walmart side. Just thinking about walkability.
I do know that the racetrack will be constructing sidewalk along their entire frontage, and I believe that Walmart, I believe their sidewalk on the south, I see the south side, the west side of Christie Nobway. And so I think that racetrack will actually get ahead of this project, so they'll be able to easily cross and get back to Walmart, just like you want, I believe.
And so, just, I'm sorry, back to my little detention pond area.
Yes, ma'am.
So does the buffer stop there? It looks like the buffer that goes all the way around this property, but it does not extend all the way between the detention pond and what looks to be Mr. Delk's workshop building.
So, I think that the best place to see that, Ms. Jones, is on page twenty-four of the booklet.
Thank you.
And so, if you'll see, the kind of the green, the darker green is the pond that you're talking about. The red is the buffer, and so we are definitely continuing one there. The only place that we don't show one is up in the northeast corner, and that would be where the RM sixteen is, and I think we're considered like zoning there, and so we did not have one there. Everywhere that we had a distinguished or a different buffer or zoning classification, we've got a buffer. And I believe that they probably planted a buffer, I'm almost positive that RM sixteen plants a buffer against CH whenever they did their site plan as well. So there is a buffer there.
So then, what looks like landscaping that's been added in almost all the way around the property, that's not really what your buffer? What I'm going by then to determine what you're saying your buffer is, is what's in the writing, the fifteen-foot Type D landscape buffer along the bottom, is the whole entire extent of the...
Yes, ma'am. All of the red and all the yellow are buffer on that sheet twenty-four. All the red and yellow are buffer on that. Or if we can put it back up on the screen.
I'm the only one that they look like they don't say the same thing. As long as we know, I mean, I guess, maybe I'm the only one that, I'm missing out, I guess. I'm not seeing it correctly. I mean, I see what you're saying on page twenty-four.
Yes, ma'am.
But when I'm looking at page twelve, that doesn't look like the same thing to me.
Okay. I can make sure, they do kind of have a dark-green hatch there, kind of the cloud, I think you're looking at maybe the clouded, the dark-green cloud. And so, we can extend that around, or take that off and let sheet twenty-four speak for itself, instead of doing that, to eliminate that confusion, because that's not the intent, the intention is to follow sheet twenty-four.
Okay. As long as we know where the, where the buffer, if it's on page twenty-four, that's perfect. I guess that's where it's supposed to be, in the landscape section of it, right?
Well, she'll be consistent throughout, so I'll...
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
I think Ms. Rush brought up something about discussing colors. When I look at page fourteen and fifteen, when I saw page fifteen at first, I was, I stopped for a moment to see the difference between the taupe and the gray, the light gray. But when you look at the examples on fourteen of the kind of colorway, to me, the colors, sometimes it's just the gray prints. The colors on page fourteen, to me, kind of go well together. And you look over the right, so it could be just a slight misrepresentation in the rendering, perhaps. Seeing a finished board at the right time to confirm that might...
I think, I think you're probably right. There's probably a difference in the picture, because on the, on sheet fourteen, they're real, they're pictures of real materials, whereas you're doing the rendering on page fifteen. I think we're probably happy to say we'll just submit a material board at site plan. That way you see actual physical samples, and everybody knows exactly those colors. There's no question about it, if you're happy with that condition.
Because we're saying this, this looks like maybe a little bit of an issue right here, so as long as we get that clarified, then, site plan. That's what we think we're saying right here. We haven't had the public hearing yet, though, so we may have more to say. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Or, Mr. Taylor, did I let you finish?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I probably talked too much.
No, never. All right. Thank you very much. We will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak, either for or against this application. Okay. Well, seeing no one, then, we will close the public hearing and continue any discussion on this item.
I guess I have one question, it's from Matt, and it's, at the rear of the site, you have a hammerhead for that last building in the corner, and you have an access point in the middle. Would, I mean, does it make sense to put two access points? And I don't know what the, this site's development, the next adjacent site's development is, but that's just my question.
We, we looked at that, because we originally had an access out the rear, because we felt, it appeared to us there was an existing right-of-way in the county that we were going to be able to utilize. The county has a little different interpretation of that, and so we come back with this access point. And in order to do that, I had to look at the grades back there, and so this was the only opportunity, it appeared to me, to make a connection because of the grades. The other one, I was still going to have a four-to-five-foot grade transition. If I can make that change during construction plans, I'm happy to extend another one. We don't have any objection to having two connections back there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very close to being one anyway, but if you see that opportunity...
We can certainly do that. What I did was a very quick look, and I'd definitely, would definitely spend more time with the final grading plan.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? And just since we're sitting on the page, looking at page thirteen with the example of the trash enclosure, I'm just, obviously, it would match, it would be done to match the buildings again. That's just a example, it says, but not red brick. Or motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. South.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Our next item is also a zoning application for approximately one acre located along Gresham Lane to be rezoned from CL to PCD, Secure Lawn PCD. Mark Lovinsky is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you very much. Mark Lovinsky is the applicant, and he's submitted a request to rezone the subject property here in purple, from commercial local to planned commercial district, in order to operate a lawn service business. It is located along Gresham Lane, along the east side, and to the west of Highway Interstate twenty-four. This is, there is a residence that's located on the property, as well as a storage shed, and has been used as a residence historically. The applicant is requesting a zone change, because lawn, tree, and garden service businesses are not permitted in the CL zoning district. The PCD district would allow the proposed use and ensure that the business structures are upgraded and site is screened appropriately for the use requested. Adjacent uses to the north, south, and east, pretty much surrounding the property, is the Lane-Agri Park property. This is zoned PCD. And property to the west, west of Gresham Lane, is in the unincorporated portion of Rutherford County, zoned RM, which is single-family residential, and also PUD, Plan Unit District, which has a Honda overstock storage area for cars, and that parcel is approximately twenty acres in size. The PCD program book indicates that Murphysboro Lawn Bus, oh, I'm sorry, that the applicant's already operating a lawn business in Murphysboro, and is requesting to relocate to this site in order to continue to operate within the city limits. He would be converting the residential structure to a commercial office. This would require site plan approval in order to do that conversion, because as a residence, it needs to be able to be upgraded to current building code standards, have ADA accessibility, as well as include a parking area, commercial access, and it also will require landscaping. The exist, excuse me, the existing storage building on the property would be used temporarily until they would construct a new storage building at the rear of the office area. The new storage building also would be subject to a site plan review and approval process. There are no requests for any deviation for this particular project. Suburban residential is what is identified in the future land use map, is what this would continue to be, is development. My understanding is, when we did the future land use map a few years ago, that we just assumed that the use would continue as a residence. We did not foresee that to be commercial. However, as a commercial use, this would be consistent with the adjoining properties. The Planning Commission should determine if this is an appropriate instance to deviate from the land use map, and if zoning is adopted, staff recommends that the land use map be revised to reflect a commercial, general land use for this particular site. The applicant's representative, Mr. Clyde Roundtree, is here, and he's available for the Planning Commission hearing to discuss the proposed rezoning requested. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter, and then make a recommendation to the city council. Happy to answer any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rush. Hello, Mr. Roundtree.
Hello again. See if I can find it. Sorry about this. Let me see if there is shit right there. All right, Chairman Jones, Commissioners. My name is Clyde Roundtree, with Hudson Steel Engineering. I am here representing Mark Lovinsky with Secure Lawn. He is available after my presentation for a few comments as well. So thank you for hearing our presentation. As Marina mentioned, we are basically coming in line with the PCD zoning that is adjacent to the property, so we feel that it is consistent with what we're requesting in relationship to adjacent relationships. The clients work with the Agri Park folks. Because he's in the spraying business, he does a lot of consulting with them, and he actually does some of their continuing education. So he's established a very good relationship with them, and they've given positive feedback on his desire to change this to commercial property, especially in a related business. So just wanted to bring that to attention on this particular slide. These slides show the adjacent relationships, and the top corner on the left... These slides show the adjacent relationships and the top corner on the left, uh, that really kind of shows you the existing tree line. If we can call that a buffer, that's a buffer. It's extremely dense and we plan on keeping that intact. You really have very little presentation of the house from any perspective outside of right along Gresham Lane to the, you know, right in front of it. So just wanted to make sure that you understood that this is a, as far as a visually protected area, it's, it's very much screened. On the bottom lower corner, that's the rear of the house. That's the sunroom area. That's gonna be remodeled. There's a lot of changes that will happen to the structure. If you need more detail on that, Mr. Lovinsky can get into those kind of details. And as Marina mentioned, that bottom center photo is of the existing storage building. That doesn't meet current design guidelines. He's not anticipating an upgrade in that building with this application. The home will be remodeled as far as a new facade. He's gonna add a porch, add a ramp, add shutters, those kind of things, paint it. But as far as this, this is more of his temporary storage facility while he gets transitioned over to this property. As we look at the master plan, we'll show in the two slides further on, there's a new building that's being proposed. Currently, on the bottom right-hand corner, it shows it has a gravel driveway. That'll be upgraded to an asphalt driveway. He'll have his guests parking along that as well as his staff employee parking. The house on the top left-hand corner is the existing residence. It'll be converted into a commercial building. Uh, it's very much a distance off of, uh, off of Gresham, so it sits pretty far back. And then, um, across the street, there is a subdivision that has some, you know, modest homes, but they're nice. And then, as Marina mentioned, there's a large metal building that's adjacent, kind of catty corner of this property that, and what'd you say that was Marina, exactly? I'm not sure that, is that a city building, that one?
It was a Honda.
It's a Honda storage facility?
For the Honda dealership.
Okay, I just, it has no demarcation on the building itself, so, but it is a big metal building. With that in mind, as far as the site plan's concerned, it shows the septic field's out front, so there'll be no development on the front. That big kind of brownish-red building is the proposed future storage building that Mr. Lovinsky wants to have in this PRD, or PCD, so we know that it can be approved in the future. And as we mentioned, the metal building is shown on the bottom right there. That, that will be removed upon the construction of the new storage. There will be guest parking out front, six spaces there, and then some handicap parking as well as some employee parking along the, on the front right-hand side. A key component to this is this, we're upgrading, we're gonna upgrade the appearance of the house, which is important. Uh, he's gonna add some architectural detailing on the front of the building. But as far as the landscaping, that's gonna be a key component. He is in the landscaping business, although he's not a landscape contractor. He works a lot with them. So he wants it to have a really nice kind of landscaped appearance, so it's probably over the top as far as what we typically do for foundation planting and the entrance planting, but working with the staff, that has become our formal open space as well. So we're not doing a dog park and we're not doing any kind of play area. We're actually doing kind of a formal garden area. That'll kind of bring representation for, you know, his type of business. We'll already introduce an sign. That'll be important for just wayfinding to this particular property. But it's unique to this project that we're actually kind of using the garden space as our formal open space, which I'm excited about seeing happen. As was mentioned, uh, we have some, if we need to establish any more buffer areas, if there's any kind of gaps in the existing landscaping and, and existing tree cover, we'll go ahead and fill those gaps. We will add some street-type trees along the front. There'll be a split rail fence, and he really wants to have a great presentation from Gresham. Again, it's now a commercial business, so he really wants to market himself well. So with that in mind, those are my, that's my brief presentation. Mr. Lovinsky would like to come up just for a few minutes and just tell you about his relationship with Agri Park and maybe some of his intentions on the facade of the building.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Welcome, Mr. Lovinsky.
Thank you. Good evening and, uh, thanks for having me. So we've been in business, uh, in Murphysboro since two thousand and three and want to stay in Murphysboro, very interested in that. We currently have, uh, nine employees. We have very little, um, outside, uh, customers come to our facility. It would be a rare occasion, um, so the traffic flow would not be from them. It would basically be from, uh, the employees coming to work. I'm interested in the building out back primarily just for storage of our trucks. So when our, uh, just so that they're out of sight, out of, out of view. Uh, we do, we do not have, uh, a great deal of product that we keep. We have deliveries that come just on standard, um, you know, pickup trucks, uh, about two to four times per month, and that's it. So, um, but very, very limited to exposure from, from outside public coming in. We do not, uh, have really normal, uh, operating hours. The guys will get there from about seven. They're gonna leave between three, four, or five. Office closes at five, so nothing, uh, you know, nothing at, at night gonna disturb anybody, anything like that. No noisy equipment. All of our products and all of our units are, are, are in individual trucks. They're loaded at the facility and then they're, uh, they're transported out. And we treat about a thirty-mile radius outside of Nashville. So we're just interested in, you know, staying in Murphysboro and, uh, you know, just keeping all of their families, you know, around here. So, um, we have a great relationship with the, uh, with the UT Extension Office who resides at the, um, on, on the current site residence. They have written us a, a really nice, uh, letter of support. We currently, uh, we speak at some of their engagements, participate in their continuing education, and they're very supportive of us coming to that property. So, um, answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Lovinsky? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. All right, we will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this application. And seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and ask for any further comments or questions from the Planning Commission.
If there are none, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. And our next item, item E is a zoning application for approximately twelve-point-eight acres located along Veterans Parkway to be rezoned from CH to PRD, Sullivan's Retreat PRD. Cornerstone Development is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. Cornerstone Development is the applicant and they have submitted a request to rezone twelve-point-eight acres from Commercial Highway to Planned Residential District in order to develop eighty-nine townhomes. This would be a density of six-point-nine-six, approximately seven dwelling units to the acre. It is located along Veterans Parkway along the east, has a connection to Veterans Parkway. You can see where it extends there in the blue, north of Franklin Road. Uh, the site is vacant at this time. The applicant has indicated the request for rezoning is to create Sullivan's Retreat because the site has limited visibility along Veterans Parkway for any commercial development. The adjacent uses to the east is overall creek and further east are single-family residences in Rutherford County. And these is, this is area zoned RM, which is their medium-density residential. To the north is zoned Commercial Fringe and has, uh, site plan approval for a retail center and a self-storage facility. The property to the south, um, is developed with the Kroger Grocery Store. And to the west is zoned CH and developed with a dental office and a veterinary clinic. And further west across Veterans Parkway are single-family residences on large fi, um, five-acre parcels. Sullivan's Retreat, uh, program book indicates that this would be a horizontal property regime or an HPR and that the homeowners association would maintain the common areas. Each unit would be a minimum of one thousand three hundred and fifty square feet in size and would have three bedrooms and a single-car garage. Uh, it would be private roads on site, sidewalks located on both sides of the road, and trees in the front yard. Uh, the building exterior materials are masonry and the book that was provided has pages fourteen through eighteen where it depicts the, the building exterior architectural design and materials. The amenities proposed is the playground, um, optional dog park, optional, it's one that comes up, walking trails, benches, a pavilion, and a play lawn. Access will be via a new public cul-de-sac street from Veterans Parkway, which will have three travel lanes at the intersection, and also a private access drive behind the existing commercial developments that will take drivers to the signalized intersection in front of Kroger. The applicant's asking to deviate from the front yard setbacks from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet as compared to the RSA Type Two zoning. Twenty-five feet is adequate distance for driveway parking, so staff is comfortable with that request for deviation. For this one, the general land use map, uh, for the Murphysboro twenty-thirty-five plan identifies general commercial as the appropriate land use for this site. General commercial are for, is for larger commercial buildings, larger parking lots, typical of what you're seeing to the south and what's been approved to the west. It is consistent, uh, what they're asking for is not consistent with the land use map, but rather, um, an auto-urban residential land use character. The Planning Commission should discuss that this is an appropriate instance to deviate, and if so, um, would recommend the staff that they would update the map to, uh, to make the change appropriately. The comments that staff has is the adjacent land uses and zoning. The property is contiguous to Kroger and other commercial development to the southwest, and, um, staff is concerned with these types of uses being next door to a townhome residential use. It would be more consistent to continue with the commercial development in this particular area. The proposed single-family attached residential is really inappropriate and incongruous for the adjacent zoning and proposed commercial uses that are coming on, online. Also, it's inconsistent with the twenty-thirty-five comprehensive plan, uh, which recommends general commercial. In this particular case, staff does agree with the land use map, that it should stay as a commercial type of use and not deviate from the map itself. In addition, Murphysboro Water Resources Department has indicated that the area in the vicinity of the project needs to be assessed as to whether the sewer basin currently has greater than the percentages targeted for multifamily and medium-density residential. Water Resources Department is not supportive of any increases in density for new development until the assessment can be completed due to potential limitations regarding sewer infrastructure and would not be supportive of any zoning changes that increase the assumed density if it's determined that the goals for the basin are already exceeded. Also, Overall Creek Elementary School has experienced rapid growth over the last few years. Overall Creek, Salem, and Scales Elementary Schools are all at or near capacity. Staff is supportive of the site developing with commercial use under the existing zoning for the reasons given. Staff requests the Planning Commission to take these factors into consideration when determining whether or not to recommend approval to the City Council. The applicant's representative, Matt Taylor, is here and can present more information on the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Rush before we hear from Mr. Taylor?
Ms. Rush. Chair Lady Jones, Matt Taylor of SEC again. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. John Harney, who is also representing the applicant on this project. And I do not see Mr. Minji here, uh, but also, uh, Mr. Justin Harney, who would be the ultimate builder of the townhomes, is here as well. So we are here tonight to present to you our request for Sullivan's Retreat, a PRD rezoning request. As Ms. Rush said, it is about twelve-point-eight acres located along the east side of Veterans Parkway, north of Highway ninety-six, uh, just to the north of the Kroger Shopping Center. The site's been previously cleared as, uh, it was done, um, to put in some infrastructure, detention pond, uh, sewer for the commercial out parcels along the front edge of Veterans Parkway. This is a blow-up of that same area, uh, as you can see. The area that we've requested, uh, the pink and white line there sets back and is very, very hidden. Uh, it's about a hundred and seventy-five feet back from the front of Kroger, so, uh, limits the visibility along Veterans Parkway as well as the, uh, other existing commercial buildings and future buildings along Veterans Parkway. Uh, the site today is zoned Commercial Highway, as Ms. Rush said. And this is looking from the existing kind of alley road behind the, um, existing veteran, veterinary clinic and dental office. Looking onto the site, you can see some of the remnants of the previous clearing. And here's, uh, the existing detention pond, which we would relocate, reshape, if you will, that was constructed for those commercial out parcels. This is looking from Veterans Parkway toward Kroger. This is looking at the veterinary clinic, so our site would be directly behind this building. And then this is looking at, uh, the dental office on the right, and then, um, at the time, this was a vacant, uh, retail store. I'm not sure if anything's moved in there now, but again, we would be behind this. So you can very clearly see how visibility is limited along here. Um, the plan itself, we have requested a PRD zoning, uh, that would allow eighty-nine townhomes, and that gives a density just under seven units to the acre, as Ms. Rush said. We do that while we maintain over fifty percent of the site is open space. Uh, again, that, that open space is distributed throughout the neighborhood. It is not crammed in a corner. Uh, we've tried to make that easily accessible to each and every resident, uh, for this development. Uh, one thing you'll notice is we have left the commercially viable pieces, we've left them as commercial. Uh, the red and the blue that you see hatched here, uh, those are the pieces that we still, that we think are still very viable, uh, commercial. This piece was zoned at a different time, uh, when big boxes were more prominent. And, uh, you know, there are very few and far between big boxes, and this corner has probably experienced its big box with the Kroger. So, uh, that, that's why we believe, uh, in this plan. We think that those commercial uses that are there today, as well as will be there in the future, are an asset to our development, and our development will be an asset to them, likewise. And so, um, you know, again, these, these townhomes will be sold underneath an HPR, horizontal property regime. It's a very walkable community. We've got sidewalks along both sides of all of our streets that will connect back into the sidewalks along the public street. In addition, there are sidewalks along this, or will be sidewalks along this rear baggage or alley road behind the commercial that'll link you back over toward Kroger, so you can walk daily if you want to, to get your groceries. So very compatible uses. Um, all of the outside space, common areas will be managed by the HOA, uh, that will be by third-party organization. Similar to the last townhouse project, we've got buffers along all of our sides except the creek. Uh, there, we have left that a very natural, um, buffer. We want, uh, I think that Overall Creek through this section stays wet most of the time, so that'd be a pretty special place. In addition, the commercial to the north as well as to the west will construct their own buffer whenever they have a site plan, so that side will have double buffers, if you'd like to call it that. We will have a, uh, segment of public street, um, that will be constructed with this project. It'll come from the north side of the veterinary clinic back, and it'll end in the cul-de-sac. Uh, once you get internal to the townhouse project, it would be all private streets maintained by the HOA. Townhomes, again, are a mixture of brick and fiber cement, um, two stories, minimum thirteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and a mixture of one- and two-car garages. Uh, again, we think the architecture, uh, is very strong architecture. This same architecture you've actually approved and, uh, we're currently building, uh, at the corner of Joby Jackson and Manchester Pike. Uh, we didn't change anything on this elevation, uh, from that previous approval. Uh, it's still got a strong base of brick. We worked that front elevation in and out. Uh, we worked the roofline up and down and then add a lot of detail to the garage. That was interesting. So, um, I'll continue to walk through this, but, you know, the rear elevations, they mimic the front. Uh, you've got covered porches, you've got a lot of glass, you've got a good mixture of materials there. And so, again, it's very strong architecture. And then we, we carry that all over to the sides. Uh, we try not to have any, uh, flat facade or flat elevations. We want every elevation here to be attractive. Uh, amenities, um, we've tried to do a very pronounced monument sign. Uh, that's gonna be what you're looking at as you, the whole time you drive down this cul-de-sac. And so we want that to be well landscaped, uh, very prominent, um, and very visible. And so it's a welcome home sign to our residents. We're excited about that. We're excited about that location. Want to do a good job with it. Immediately past that, we have a high-energy area, a lot of activity, we think, will happen here. That's where the mail kiosk would be, the dog park, a pavilion, as well as a playground. So people are going to frequent this on a daily basis. They're going to make friends, probably make a few enemies. And it, it will be a hub of the neighborhood. On the flip side, if you have a little different personality or just need a chill day, then we've planned a second pavilion toward the southeast side of the project, away from that activity, so you can go read a book, just hang out, watch your kids throw frisbee, whatever it is you want to do. A, a different environment for that end of the project. We're excited about being able to offer both of those areas. You know, example of the playground as you come in. We've planned for all these amenities, as well as the sidewalks. We wanted people to be able to get there, so we've tried to make that extremely easy. We've complimented the sidewalks and amenities with all the walking trails shown here in red. These will not only connect the structured amenities, but they'll also, you know, go along the creek, really complement that natural environment over there, have some special places over there. And then, as I mentioned previously, an obligatory dog park that you've got to have. We've tried to locate that away from the units. So to avoid the obnoxious, or potentially noxious, obnoxious uses. Accesses, I really see the site as having two primary points of access. One of those is existing in the yellow. That's the existing signal at Kroger, which will be available. And then we'll build a new one at the circle in red there with Veterans Parkway, with our proposed street. Again, all of our internal streets will be private, maintained by the HOA. And then the buffering, as I mentioned earlier, all three sides except for the creek, so the northwest and south will all get a type A buffer. And then those all, the west and north, when those are developed commercially, would also come back with a buffer of their own. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Mr. Taylor, and I'm sure every plan book has this, and I probably haven't thought to ask about it before. The walking trails that are throughout the development.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it state somewhere exactly the width of those walking trails? Or is it just the pictures that we see that is what we would expect to see out there?
So we do not state the width, but at a minimum, we construct those as five foot wide for ADA compliance. You get any narrower than that, then you start to have to have some turn-in spaces. They get very awkward, and so we make those at least five feet wide everywhere. And we're happy to write that in the book, to clarify.
I was just wondering if that was, I don't know, if that's wide enough? And then, and Ms. Rush, you may have to answer this for me, I'm not sure who, but, you know, again, back to where we've got the pictures of the different brick and fiber cement boards and things in here on page 14, you know, versus what we see. But under each sample in there, they all say different colors will be allowed. So when we approve a book, that's really, we're going to see that at a site plan, and that's when we would really approve the actual colors.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
For instance, if you, we've got one, a color of one brick over here, picture, but I think we've got about three different colors of brick shown on the elevation. And so if you're hap, we're happy to do the material board, just like we were on the last projects. That way, they are real-world samples. That way, there's no question of what that color is when it comes to construction. As I mentioned, we're building this same thing across, on the other side of town. It'd be very easy to produce.
So we would review it during the site plan stage, and we do require that they put in the text that it has to comply with the Murfreesboro Design Guidelines, so that it's not the opportunity to detract from the guidelines, but to ensure that it does complement and is consistent with the design guidelines.
And then what we approve, like on a material board or whatever, even though the plan book would say different colors will be allowed, or different patterns will be allowed, different cuts will be allowed, whatever we would approve at a, a site plan or an actual material board would override the plan book on that?
The elevations, the colored elevations and renderings that are in the program book kind of set the stage for what the architecture will look like and what the color palette is. So minor changes can be approved through the site plan level. If there's significant changes, they would have to come back and revise the program book.
Okay. What other questions tonight, Mr. Taylor, before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Taylor, when you said the, you had the two points of access, the main intersection where the traffic signal is, did you say you can access the private access drive?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I made sure I heard correctly. Thank you. And was there, is it in the book, what the 2035? I was trying to make sure I read those details clearly, and I couldn't find the exact reference in the book.
Usually, we have a text segment in there, but we may not, does not look like we do in this one. I think it says, it says that, it basically mimics the existing zoning, the commercial highway zoning, is what the 2035 says.
Okay. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this project.
I'm John Harney, a broker with the Parks Group here in Murfreesboro, and I'm here tonight representing both the existing property owner and the proposed developer. I'd like to, if I can, give you a little history about this property. I was involved a few years ago when Kroger came out in this area looking. At that time, this property, actually a larger piece, was owned RM16. Kroger was trying to decide to buy on that corner or not, was having a hard time fitting. And the Wright and Jordan family that owns this property, in discussion with them, I suggested to them that we look at trying to convince Kroger to turn Kroger to face Veterans rather than Franklin Road. And if they did that, it would take about three acres of their property, but it would make great sense to rezone the rest of this from RM16 apartment use to commercial. Now, that was a few years ago. What I think the good is came out of that, the presentation for Kroger and what they've done looks a lot better facing Veterans than it would been crammed in a lot shorter length facing Franklin Road. At the time, I thought this was, I would have supported exactly what the, the thoroughfare plan said or the master zoning plan said, because we anticipate, or I did, you know, possibly Staples, Lowe's, a Home Depot, maybe even Academy Sports, which all could have fit on this site. But the last two, three years, and especially since COVID has arrived, the retail world and big-box world has changed drastically. Now, the ones that are there are really struggling. And I think COVID has accelerated that, because now people can get on their computer and have whatever they wanted delivered to their house the next day. So the idea of this property developing commercially is so deep. As, as Matt said, a tremendous amount of it is behind the, the back face of Kroger. The likelihood of this developing retail-wise is real unlikely now, because number one, it's hidden, but number two, there's just no big-box users. What we tried to do was make the best of what we see as the future on this property, leave enough commercial that would line up with the front face of Kroger to possibly have a, a retail center, mixed use, maybe a restaurant use involved, to, across the face to line up with Kroger. And then the biggest thing this property's got going for it is location when it comes to residential use. As y'all are well aware, we've got a lot of new medical that's getting ready to all come out of the ground, right up the street on Veterans. And a lot of those employees, people that work there, that sort of thing, this would be very attractive to. And I think it's the fact that there are not too many townhome projects anywhere in the, in the close vicinity of this, like there are a lot of townhome projects around town. But my son's interested in it, Justin, he's, he's now, this would be the third project he'd work on. But we think it, it really is nicer and attractive to have not quite as big a properties, but have them sprinkled around with areas where they're walkable to conveniences like Kroger, like some of the shops there that would be along the property, but at the same time, be relatively close to where people work. So it's not quite live-work, but it's close. But I think if, if, if you deny this and say it's got to stay commercial, I think it will be remaining vacant for quite a while, because there are just no big-box buyers out there. In fact, I'm working with a few right now, trying to figure out what's going to be the next alternative use to some of these boxes. Some of them actually in this municipality. So we think this is a, is a, is a good way to have something happen on the property that is in a good location, and yet still tries to respect part of it remaining commercial. And certainly be glad to answer any, any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harney. Appreciate it. Appreciate you being here to speak. Anyone else that would like to come up and speak on this application? Seen none? We will close the public hearing. And ask for further comments and questions from the planning commission.
Ms. Rush, will you talk a little bit about how the sewer density ordinance that we have overlays into what the, the density for this project is? I mean, the comparison between townhouse, what we expect there, and how this stacks up?
I'm not an expert on the sewer allocation ordinance, but in terms of numbers, the resolution that accompanied the ordinance put forth standards or maximum limits for what each type of development could be. So for a townhome type of development, the maximum density is seven dwelling units to the acre. So this is consistent with that resolution table. As I understand it from the sewer issues in this particular basin, is that there is an overall number that we're trying to achieve. And if we take development potential out of one, that's typically a lower user, like commercial, or self-storage, or warehousing, or office, those are typically lower sewer demand users. And allow for residential, which is a higher sewer demand user, to go in. Even though it's consistent with the resolution and ordinance, it still means that if you're giving to one, someone else is going to have to go down in order to achieve that overall basin number. I think there were some numbers provided in our staff report that came from the sewer department, as well as Sam, Sam Huddleston's here this evening, and maybe he can speak to more details on that. But that's the general gist of it. If you take from one, or if you provide to one, you're going to be taking from another. And how do you balance that all out?
Thank you.
If I can, address that. I've had several conversations with Ms. Smith and the Water and Sewer Department, or Water Resources Department. Old habits are, are to break. The, I, I think the study that's related is they've got to analyze the entire basin, because I actually had reached out and offered to do whatever study, if they'd tell me what area. And so they're talking about the overall creek basin, which I think is several thousands of acres that they want to go through and study. So I think they're in the process of doing that, but have said, hey, that, I believe their timing desired on that is with the new future land use map. And I don't think that's due out until after the first of the year. And so I, I think that's where that comes from.
Well, I think that's the, for me, that's, I, I think, given the times, we have a challenge for the city. I mean, what John said is true. I mean, the, it's a reality that retail is having problems right now. I think the challenge we have here is they want to do it af, I mean, how can you make the decision until after the study is done? And that's the challenge we have, is trying to figure out how to make this decision. If they want to study the basin first, then we need the study done before we approve it. But I don't know how you get there. Because if it's after the first of the year, that's going to be a serious challenge for them.
I have another question, too. And I can't see Mr. Huddleston, if he's over there. He is over there.
He is.
Related to...
Waiting to come up here and speak to you.
Concerns, and Ms. Rush, you may be able to answer this, or Sam can as well, but related to the concerns about the specific basin, were those concerns before, did, did we have those concerns as staff before this project was presented? Or did they come up as a result of this project being presented?
Not sure. Mr. Martin, I've got an answer to that, that question specifically about the concerns in the basin, to say that it was before or after this. I think as we, as we look specific, or generally at the basins with the sewer allocation study, there was a, there's a level of concern about all of them. Some of them, the, the concern was more acute than others. For example, the, the State Route 99, New Salem Highway Basin, we're seeing a lot of activity, and we knew we had some undersized piping in there. So, so that one seemed to be a little more acute, as far as staff's concerned about it. I personally don't know, and I'm going to look over at Ms. Rush, and then also Mr. McKnight, to know if, if, if they might be got anything to add to that.
We meet with the developers in advance. We hold at least one or two meetings on every development that comes forward with an application. On this one, as well as anything else that's been proposed in this area for residential, we've consistently told all developers that there are concerns in this particular area, and that we wouldn't be supportive of residential. Whether or not they move forward with an application, is there, they have the will to do that? They can do, move forward? But staff has been in communication. Don't have an easy solution, because the study is kind of ongoing and, and involves a lot of folks, as I understand.
Yes, and, and maybe to, to add to that, there was a table that had land use and densities there, but there was also an overarching balance or a mix of uses. And as I recall, I don't have the numbers exactly in front of me, but for this medium-density residential, seven units per acre, there was a, an, an overall thought that about 11, 11% of land use in a given basin would be at that density. So the makeup of the basin, when it, when it changes, it changes that distribution. I think Ms. Rush did a good job explaining that, that when you increase density in an area that was already zoned for commercial highway, that's going to take away capacity, or that's, that's going to put an additional demand, a higher demand on the sewer system than was anticipated. And so it's, it's going to have to balance out somewhere. Obviously, we don't want to get to the point where, where we have sewer running out of the ground in the overall creek basin. That's what we're trying to avoid. The other thought I would add to that is that for, for rezoning applications that are not consistent with the sewer, sewer allocation ordinance, this is the timeframe to, to discuss that, right? If it's a, if it needs to be an exception or a change. And so there's not necessarily a separate process, like there might be for a site plan. If a site plan comes in, and the demand is higher than, than, than what would be allowed under the zoning, that has to be a special request, but this zoning application is the request to, to also consent to the sewer allocation or the sewer density that's requested.
I think, I think what concerns me a little bit, I think you did a great job explaining that, and Sammy as well, that if we change the land use based on the sewer allocation, it obviously changes the capacity. And when you convert this from a more intense use, from commercial to the residential piece, it does that. I think what would be, what would be helpful to me, and I think what's challenging for me, is not knowing how red it is, if that makes any sense. You know, hit the panic button today, or hit the panic button. We're talking about it being thousands of acres, you know. I don't have a great feel for how big that issue is relative to, you know, 90 units, if that makes sense. And so...
So, so in the overall scheme of things, 90 units may not seem that great. So, so in the overall scheme of things, 90 units may not seem that great, but it, but it does get back to the makeup of the basin and the makeup of the assumptions that went into the sewer allocation ordinance. And so what, what you will consistently hear from staff on that is this, this request is not consistent with those, with those allocations or with those underlying assumptions. And we're going to ring that bell and we're going to ring that bell. And that's, that's what we need to do.
Sure.
Intuitively, we know though, that if we make this decision on every, and remind me, Marina, of the acreage of this tract?
Twelve point eight.
Twelve point eight. So if we, if we do that on every twelve point eight tract and we, and, and we're really talking about a tripling of the density, right? It's two point five allowable for commercial, we're asking for just under seven. So you're, you're roughly tripling the density. If we do that on every 12 acre track, it doesn't take too many of those to, to add up to become a significant one. So the, 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 the system is probably not sensitive enough to detect, quite honestly, this. But I'd also add another thing, this is not just a question of sewer allocation. That's an element of it. It's also a question of our vision for this corridor. And I think Marina, again, did a good job in, in laying that out. The, the 2035 land use plan has suggested this is commercial. Commercial nodes do very well at major intersections. You've got a, a five lane roadway connected to an interstate interchange. If you'll recall, those of you that were at the city council meeting last week, we talked about Veterans Parkway having, carrying 40,000 cars per day, a little bit closer to the interchange, but, but no doubt, a lot of those cars will also make it down to 96. So, you know, the vision for this area is, is part of the consideration for this body as well. And, and it's not just a question of sewer allocation, but a question of, of this body's vision and then the mayor and council's vision for, for the use of this area. And, and to us, as we've looked at it, the, the areas closer to the interstate where residential is a use on both sides, those don't seem to be necessarily good candidates to change to commercial today. They may come that way. But then as we get closer to the interstate and the interstate interchange, those will, and we're already seeing that with West Lawn and with some of the other things that are going there, and the vision we have for the other side of the interstate interchange, those interchange uses make sense there. So just keep in mind that it, it's also a land use vision and how we see this area developing. That's a, that's a, to me, that's the questions before the body tonight.
What I'm really struggling with is, you know, to me, this application is, you know, really close to being a mirror image of the one that we looked at, item C, the application for Tiger, Tiger Hill, Hill Townhomes. Even though it, it had 5.41 units per acre ultimately, I'm guessing it is a totally different sewer basin that the schools are not having trouble out in this area, that all of these things that now we see as a problem on what looks to me like to be almost an identical request, but we don't think this is appropriate rezoning and we were okay with it on Tiger Hill. So at the Tiger Hill, which sewer basin would that be? A different one, obviously. And so that sewer basin is not under stress, even though we're saying the whole city is under stress regarding our sewer allocations, but this one is not, at Tiger Hill, is not under stress at the same point that the one, this one is. Is that what we're saying?
Yes, I mean, but that is just one part of it. There is a significant difference. The topography at Tiger Hill is so steep, it really is not practical for commercial development. If it was relatively flat net grade, I believe staff's position probably would be very similar to the Sullivan's Retreat position. But that was one of the driving forces. Staff met at a, at a, at a department level to try to do some visioning for various areas in the city. And we focused on the ones that were coming forward. And staff's vision for the Tiger Hill area was for a residential type of development. Could have been multifamily, could have been single family, but that would be conducive to residential. In contrast with Sullivan's Retreat, our vision for this area is for commercial to go forward along this corridor, at this portion of the corridor.
Okay. And so that's what we're working towards putting into the new land use study or zoning map that we're working on or that's coming forward in the next six months or year?
Yeah.
Or was that just a staff?
We do have a consultant that's working on drafting it. It is a local consultant and staff is working closely. We've had numerous meetings over the last six months, almost weekly at one point for several months, where we are talking about visions and what's appropriate and then also some of the descriptions to provide some additional flexibility. These things will come forward to the city council as a workshop item fairly shortly, I believe, and also to the planning commission so that we can keep you all apprised for what's going on in that study. And Greg, our planning director's here, he can speak to that a little bit as well.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight.
And the, and the only thing I would add to what Ms. Rush has said is we, we're currently taking that future land use map update and overlaying the basins on it this time, as well as looking at the 2040 plan for transportation. So it's going to be more encompassing to make sure we're looking at the opportunities with sewer basin allocations, those type of things as we put the future land use map together. That was the concern that we looked at was to make sure that all departments have been involved in the update of the future land use map. It's taken a little bit longer for that reason because we've been meeting with those, each department as, as a whole. And then after that, we'll meet with the stakeholders. So we have a draft of where we are currently that we'll be looking at on Tuesday with the consultant. And then from there, we'll roll that out to the administrative department and then we'll be ready to do a workshop with, with council to be able to update them on where we are now. But the, the real opportunity for, for us as we look at those different basins to make sure the land use that we, I believe is suitable for those areas also has the sort to be able to provide, to be provided to those, to those areas. So, but Ms. Rush is right, we look at March 2021 is when we believe it will be fully completed and, and something that we actually can use to say these are good land uses and there's sewer and, and infrastructure to, to be able to support the land use.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. And I, I certainly think it's, you know, I mean, we, we need to constantly be reviewing the different, you know, as we do the ordinances, the land use map, I mean, everything. I mean, nothing is set in stone and nothing is ever always all perfect, all, we don't need to change anything else now. I mean, it is going to always be changing and otherwise we're not growing and doing our job. But, you know, I, I want to make sure that we don't stop every development that happens while we're looking at changes to, you know, that we're going to do in six months and then it might be a year and then, you know, so do we just put everything on hold until we get the next, you know, vision?
Yeah.
I, I, I just, I want to do what's right and what's fair. I, I'm most concerned definitely with the sewer allocation and, you know, I don't want to do anything reckless in regards to that. But I, you know, when we're looking at two almost identical projects, it's really hard to just say this one's okay and this one's not.
Absolutely.
I'm struggling with that.
And I think the, you know, the Tiger Hill project as well as this one, we, we do look at those opportunities where there is, is some flexibility in what we do. We, our desire in the staff at the planning department is not just to stop or, or stop development at all. There are some opportunities for us to follow some guidelines that, that have been set before us. I mean, those are the things that we, we review the plans on, the merits of those guidelines, the ordinances and what we have before us. And we try to do that with some flexibility, of course. And also, Mr. Martin mentioned, we also try our best to make sure that we're providing that information upfront during the due diligence meeting to let the, let the applicant know where we are and, and what things we will be reviewing and, and what opportunities we exist, we see existing with the, with the project. And so that, that information is, is relayed as, as quickly as possible and it's consistently, it is very consistent with, with each of those areas.
And I, I absolutely think that in regards to this sewer allocation issue that we have, once it was known in the city, whether that was a year ago or whenever we first started having these meetings, I mean, there is, certainly should be no question among the development community that we do realize we have an issue that we need to pay very close attention to and we're doing that with each and every project. So I can't imagine that was not understood from the beginning, but maybe we're looking at it this particular, a little bit deeper than we did originally or something. I, I don't know, mate. Whatever. So that's mine.
If I can, I did have a little bit more to add to the sewer, just because I'd had some of those conversations with Ms. Smith. My understanding from Ms. Smith is that it is not necessarily a stress of this particular basin versus a stress of the other one. It is, I believe, each of you probably remember the timeframe pretty well, last, about this time last year is when we started talking about sewer allocation. And sometime between there and say March, we were presented with this chart of how much of the city we think is going to develop at, I forget the different, was it three, seven and nine units to the acre, being the low density, medium density and high density. And so I, I think that is, my understanding is that is the study that needs to be done on this basin that was to verify where we are on those percentages based on that chart that was presented at the end of last year, first of this, first of 2020. And so I think that is what we are waiting to see. That is my understanding. It is not an individual basin stress, it is a where, where are we on this chart scenario. And so I think that we are very aware of the sewer allocation ordinance, you're right, Chairman Jones, Chair Lady Jones. And so that is why when we design these, it's underneath that seven units to the acre. It, it complies with the, the allocation ordinance. And I think Mr. Hudda- all of the planning department is correct, there is a give and take. If you'll remember, directly back up Veterans Parkway, this body, I think about a year ago, approved going from, I think about 150 townhomes to commercial. And so we had exactly the opposite because it was a more viable commercial opportunity. And the city is going to reap the benefits of that with a surgery center and an MOB that gets constructed out there. And so there is a give and take with the zonings out here. And so I, that is my understanding of, of the sewer question here because there was not a capacity issue on this basin. It was, the, where's it fall in this chart that we presented a year, a year ago.
But I do think that we would, would have been looking at this property at that time in that chart as if it was commercial. So the allocation that we have allocated for this basin is based on this property being commercial.
Right. But I will say that we're talking total development in the future of each individual property. So it, it, it's a total basin development. And so there's, things are going to change. We, anytime we touch a piece of property, it changes that.
So I'm, I'm going to tag on to what Mr. Taylor offered to you. In the sewer allocation ordinance, there's a requirement in there that the Water and Sewer, or the Water Resources Director, report back on an annual basis. And that report back talks about commitments that the city has made for that past year, available capacities, and then that's also going to be an opportunity to see if we have any basin level or even citywide level mid-course corrections that we might want to take into effect. So what Mr. Gore is working on and, and some of our other staff, I think our planning staff's been helping with that, is to try to catalog and inventory the commitments that are already out there. And there are several. You know, the zoning commitments that, that we're already obligated to do is going to, is going to consume some of the capacity that's available. In addition, in that, in the past few months since we've adopted the sewer allocation ordinance, we've made some additional commitments. We have connected some additional facilities to the sewer system. And so Mr. Gore's report to this body and also to the mayor and council and to his Water and Sewer Board, or Water Resources Board, will be a, an accounting of that, of those commitments. And so there'd be a, maybe a better understanding of, of the gauges. Mr. Martin, you, you didn't use the term gauge, but that's what came to mind when you said, you know, where are we at? Are we half full, half empty? Where, where are we at on thing? And, and so Darren will give us, he'll give us a finer point on that. And, and I'll, I want to add another editorial comment. This is sewer allocation is important to us, vision is important to us. And I think in both of these cases, the vision also has to have some basis in reality. We could all have a vision for something really magnificent in an area, but if it's not practical, it's not a good vision. And so there has to be a balance in the, in the land use visioning that to have something that's based in reality. That certainly came to play, I think, in the Tiger Hill question. We painted that red 15 years ago with a commercial zoning. Today's suggestion to us would be maybe that vision of that being a, some type of commercial use up there is, is not practical. I believe there's, there's some merit for this having a commercial use in the future. And so we do believe that, that the Sullivan's Retreat request, there is some basis in reality that that could be used, could be developed commercially someday. Yes, there's some available properties that need to be consumed before that. And so just keep in mind, when I say it's vision versus, you know, versus the, the request, it's vision based in reality. And, and that's something, again, that we're, that we're going to ask this body to have an opinion on and we're going to ask the mayor and council to have an opinion as well. So I want to provide that editorial. I'd be glad to answer any other questions as, as would the rest of the staff and, and I'm sure the development team.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Based on the comments that we've heard so far tonight, I think what we'd like to, to know is how long in the future will this area get examined, this map get examined? You know, certainly we're all aware in development community of the, of the situation with the sewer capacity. And of course, knew that past, last December. I think the property owner on this and the developer is willing to withdraw or defer or whatever the case may be. If that is forthcoming and, and what we would hope would be a reasonable length of time, I think y'all have said maybe March. If, if, if that's March 21, that would, I'm not being facetious.
So, so the, the March 21 is for the future land use map. Darren's report on the sewer allocation and that report would, would actually be coming out in January. I think that's an annual report that they have in the, in the sewer allocation and the sewer ordinance that he has to do that. The future land use map update will be coming out in March 21. But the information that I hear this body requesting and, and would like to look at as well as the developers, I think that's a January report.
Well, based on Greg's statement, I think that's reasonable. We would, we would be willing to withdraw or defer whatever we need to do if, if it's coming out in that timeframe. And we're, you know, would like to see this property develop in some kind of way in, in reasonable length of time.
So I, I would think that beyond that though, if we have the same situation in March, we got to wait until the next year before the next analysis, that's not going to be acceptable for us to be able to make a decision.
Well, they'll, they'll decide, so in March, if, if, I guess, we'll see what the, Mr. Gore's report says.
What I'm saying though is Mr. Gore's report is a point in time, right? What we're looking at is dynamic as the year goes by. So we would have to wait for another point in time analysis, which would be the next year. I thought when we were looking at the sewer allocation analysis that the Water and Sewer Department were looking at this constantly and it would be able to give us answers in their analysis what we could do and what we couldn't do. I may be wrong, but maybe I'm-
Yeah, Mr. Russell, I don't, I don't think the, the tool will be that, that finely crafted to be able to, you know, to, to put it on the balance and, and say this or that. I will say that this first annual report will be the most telling.
Yeah.
Because it will, it'll, it will look back and, and then it will also, you know, evaluate what's been committed in the past several months. you know, evaluate what's been committed in the past several months to add to that. And so there will be some look forward opportunity. I, I don't think it's going to change significantly year to year after that. I mean, there, obviously there'll be some accounting of the commitments that have been made and the connections that have been made. Because the commitments generally are going to be land use and zoning related out of this body. If you commit to, you know, 100 townhome units on a particular property, they're going to deduct that from the capacity that's available. And then they're going to balance that out. Then once the connections are made to say, here's a commitment, here's a commitment that has been exercised. So these are real connections. These are planned connections that we've already committed to. And, and so this first report is going to be very helpful for this body and for the mayor and council and also for the Water Resources Board. And quite honestly, for staff to have a, to have a picture. It is a point in time analysis. But the, but the increments get closer together because we have that baseline report that comes in January. Another 12 months will, will be some amount of, of work. We, this year, for example, we're anticipating 2,000 additional residential units to be, to be built or to be permitted. And so those are real, real connections. We'll have an analysis of how many commitments we've made through site plan and preliminary plat and zoning applications, all coming through this body and all coming through the planning department. So, so we'll be able to compare those, committed versus actual connections, and then also compare that to the capacities.
I, I think my, my only concern is, is the flips. Meaning when we flip from, from a commercial zoning to a townhome zoning, then we have to keep tally of those flips.
That's right.
Otherwise, we're going to.
And that can be done, that can be done as we go. The report will be packaged and assembled and presented, but, but the Water and Sewer staff will, will be tracking those.
All right.
Right. So it's not like they're waiting until January to, you know, to, to share that information or to, or to even look at that information. There'll be a, a real time, in my mind, there'll be a real time accounting of those.
The GIS department is working also. So we're looking at how we can, if we do flip from a commercial to a PRD or plan development, we're looking at how we can put whatever, the amount of units on that particular rezoning so that we can do that in, in, in real time to be able to keep up with what's actually being rezoned and what residential is actually being brought online. We went back five years to commitments to make sure we bring those forward. So the annual report will have that information in it. But we're adding new, new processes in place to be able to tally it as we go, as we rezone different areas or add to that, that sewer impact.
Okay.
Basin by basin.
I, I think the thing that's really hard about this is, you know, if, if we didn't have a capacity issue, we, we, we wouldn't be talking about all this, obviously. And if we knew exactly how the next three or four years was going to play out, we'd know how to use it exactly. But we don't. And the point you're making, as we change between, you know, zoning, it changes all of that as we're doing it. But I think, I think it's going to continue to be difficult for us to make those decisions. And so we're going to have to get comfortable making them without all the information because we're probably never going to have all the information. But, I mean, you raise a great point.
Yeah, I, I think it would probably warrant for this body and the mayor and council to be able to, for the Water and Sewer to come back after we've went through a quarter of the year. Where are we? Do we need, I mean, do we need a warning signal to us to say, you know, you need to be careful about any more flips for this year? That's just my opinion.
It sounds like we're all, we're already getting the warnings. I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're giving their opinion. And how many more are we going to have between now and getting the report? And are we going to have the same conversation each time and say, we use the term, set a precedence?
Yeah.
You know?
Yes. And, and metrics and rubrics are good and, you know, those are predictable things. There is a deliberative element of the planning commission and mayor and council I want to remind you of, that it, that visioning land use is hard, but it's something that, that, you know, that, that you guys need to be signing on for. Because not everything is going to boil down to a, a metric or a rubric. Can we measure it? It, it's really going to be more subjective than that. And, and, you know, and, and our land use plan can help with that. Staff can help with that. The, the, the economy and the markets and the way things change will, will have an impact on that. But it is the, the very tough, heavy lifting of the planning department, I'm sorry, the planning commission to, to help us manage and deal with those, those deliberative issues envisioning for our community.
And I'll, I'll just comment too. I think it's easier for me to probably make a, a decision to deviate, or at least to feel comfortable doing it, the smaller the project is. And, and that may not, you know, make tons of sense. Because if we make a lot of those small decisions and you're making large decisions. But at the same time, you know, if this were a 250-unit development, I would probably be more afraid than I might be. But I think, you know, waiting for more information probably makes some sense since we're as close to it as we are and can make a better decision than probably we can make now. You know, one other thing too, and this is just my opinion, change the subject a little bit from sewer. The discussion related to, you know, kind of master plan land use for this and hearing the, the origins of, of how it got to where it is and hearing, you know, what we would like for it to be in the future and how it can be used in the future. You know, I, I do think the applicant makes a really good point related to the visibility of the site, especially when you factor in, you know, the slope of the site. That, that front portion of that commercial property, you know, sits about 10 feet higher than the back portion. So you're talking about extensive development to build it up if you were to try to gain some visibility. And then at the back part, as it slopes off to the river, it's probably 18 feet, you know, lower in the back. And you probably wouldn't build in the back, but you might. And so I do think that sort of limits the use. And I know as we move from that commercial zoning to the residential, that, that kind of messes up the plan and changes what we're looking at. But I think, I, I think Mr. Harney is probably right. You're going to have a hard time in the short term, a year or two, finding someone to come and develop that site. But that doesn't mean that you won't find someone two or three years down the road. So, but anyway, just my comments.
Yeah. And I don't think we're here to zone something just so we can do something with it this year versus next year. I mean, the whole, we, we want to do what's best for the long term. So I, I mean, I, I hope and I appreciate, you know, but I, I think it does sound like, I, I think we would like more information that might be available to us in a few months. And if that is acceptable to the applicants, then, you know, I think that might be the, the way to go. And whether that's a deferral. Do they, can we defer indefinitely until they're ready to come back based on information that we've been provided? Or up to six months or?
I believe that with the applicant's consent, it can be deferred for as long as they would agree to. Without their consent, we do have some timelines, but, and time requirements. But if they consent to the deferral, then that is going to be appropriate. And a defer, I guess if they, if they withdraw and reapply, I would, I would think they'd have to pay another filing fee, which, in the scheme of things, may not be that much. But still, if the report's going to expect it out in January, then a deferral till February would be appropriate if the, if the applicant agrees to that.
Well, and I was just thinking a little extra time up to them, but maybe once they see the report, if they have to make any adjustments or do anything or, you know, whatever.
Right.
A little bit of time.
Don't know exactly when. It's probably not going to come out January 1.
Right.
And, you know, we, this group meets early in the month and then in the middle of the month. So if the report comes early, we might be able to put it on the agenda ahead of time and by mid-month in January. Shouldn't need another public hearing unless they, unless they decide to make some significant changes in their plan. Which does sometimes happen when something gets pulled off and put on the shelf while then someone comes up with a change. Not suggesting they need to, but that does happen.
I would just say, Mr. Harney, before we hear, hear from you on this, if we get past, if we get past all this, and if we were having just a regular discussion, I would be asking for some architectural changes. And I know you're telling me that we might have another project that we're already under construction just like this, and that means I approved it. So I must have liked it once before, but for whatever reason, it's not speaking to me tonight. So I hope we could tweak a little bit of the architecture in there if we do get to that point.
If we do get to that point, we're, we're certainly flexible in working on architectural changes.
Thank you.
Colors, materials, kinds of dogs that the people walk around the park. You know, we're, we're all willing to do that. I think we're, we're fine with deferring if by, say, March, there'll, there'll be enough good information so that we all, including this side of the podium, can, can, can assess whether it's reasonable to go forward and, and ask for a decision or, or it just needs to be pulled back. But I, I will emphasize, you know, this city is going to continue to be, things are changing at a pace that, I've been in the business 35 years and I've never seen it change so much as it has in the last three or four years. Not so much in the residential side of things, but in, in the retail commercial side of things. And I think that's something that's going to be have considered on all fronts as we go forward. Just like we saw the West Lawn piece, which had townhomes, like, like Matt, Mr. Taylor said, was about 150, 160 units. I was personally involved in that. And we thought it was a lot smarter to turn that into commercial, retail, medical as opposed to having that townhome project out there, very out front, road fringes on two roads and actually turns out to be almost three now. So I think every situation isn't going to be exactly like the land use plan says, you know. So I think, you know, as, as Mr. Houston said, it's something you've got to constantly look at and consider the overall situation of particular pieces of property. So I think we're fine with going back to a March.
We don't need a planning commission, you see. If they don't need to change the zoning or anything else like that. So we're good with that. But, so a deferral up to, you know, later than March or however, if somebody wants to make a motion or if they have more comments before we make a motion.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I could make one more comment. I just want to say how much I appreciate staff bringing this to us early because that makes everything a whole lot easier as, as we work through these conversations. So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Unless there's other conversation, I'll make a defer or make a motion to defer. Do we want to be specific about that? Are we okay being, just making a motion to defer?
A question for Greg. When is the updated land use map? You know, I mean, if we're going to be that close to March, we might as well grab that. So.
Yeah. So we're projected to have that completed March 21.
21?
Yeah. Was this 20, 21? Yeah. Next.
But like.
This coming March.
If we leave it open.
Be specific with the last meeting in March or open.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make a motion to defer. The developer's okay with that?
Okay.
A second. Motion to defer and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you working with us on that. And appreciate everyone's information and hard work on that. Let's see. We do have some staff reports and other business. First is Stevenson subdivision, resubdivision lots three and four. Final plat for two lots on 43.5 acres, zoned heavy industrial located along General Mills Way. General Mills is the developer.
And Chair Jones, I have that.
Mr. Ross.
I was afraid you were never going to get to me. This, this started a long time ago. Actually, at some point after the attacks of the 9/11, Homeland Security began to look at how our food supply in this country could be made safer. And a lot of things were done and looked at, and this came to Murfreesboro. I'm not sure when General Mills started on it, but it came into the city in probably 2010. My file was opened in 2011. Ultimately, what happened is the city closed and abandoned Stevenson Way, Stevenson Drive, which was a street that led into the General Mills facility and on to other facilities to the south of General Mills. The city abandoned that. It became a private road. General Mills rebuilt that road with a variety of security checkpoints, entrances, truck routes for people coming in, people leaving, visitors. And they also, of course, fenced the entire property with a much more secure, to make it much more secure than it had been in the past. Part of that was to replat the property because we had to put the abandoned right of way in with, in part, the General Mills owned property and in part property on the west side of the road that still is owned by the IDB. And everything went fine and things were working. And I think the project was, the construction was completed in 2013 or 14, maybe as late as 15 for all the details. The plat was approved in 2013, I believe. And then we hit a little snag. And the snag was that a couple of the occupants got a little crossways with some operational issues, had nothing to do with really the plat. But as a result of that, the plat didn't get signed and didn't get signed and didn't get signed. And finally, about a month ago, I got the last signature on the plat. And it has now been signed by the, all the owners, all the interested parties, all the appropriate utilities. Unfortunately, the planning commission approval has expired. So we're back tonight to ask you to reapprove this plat so that I can get it signed by the planning commission secretary and we can record this thing. And I can close my file, which now takes up about almost a third of a work table. That's our request tonight for you to approve, reapprove this, this plat. It has met all the staff comments that were, it was subject to when the plat was approved back in 2013.
Okay. Any questions? Concerns? Okay. So we just need a motion, correct?
Please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And our next item under staff reports and other business is the consideration of the 2021 planning commission calendar. Did everybody look at the calendar we got? I guess since Matthew and Margaret Ann are out, fall breaking. Mr. McKnight, anything specific or you need us to, do we need to have a motion to approve it or just in general have questions or?
A motion would be needed to approve the calendar for 2021.
Notice there were like two meetings, I believe, that were scheduled for two o'clock as opposed to our normal one o'clock, 2:30, excuse me, instead of our one o'clock. But, so.
And that's probably due to a workshop.
City council workshops.
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. Certainly. Anything else?
No meetings on Christmas or anything like that.
Good, good. All right. Need a motion to approve the 2021 planning commission calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any further business tonight? Okay. We stand adjourned. Thank you.